The Run Me Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, Inside the Loop and Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying in retrospect as well as posting notices in the Barrow Hall, Run Me Post Office, Mary Bold School, Alliance Bangham School, Graystowning School, and the Run Me Public School District website. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call board members.
Ms. Dare.
Here.
Ms. Bebe.
Here.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Here.
Ms. Davidson. Mr. Lego.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Panzarella.
Here.
Ms. Sams.
Here.
Ms. Baldi.
Here.
Also present, Mark Ayouchi Superintendent, Dr. Sean McCarron Business Administrator, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Jade Yezzi Principal of Bangham and Downing School, Mr. Steve Peely Principal of Bold School, Mr. Steve Maloney Vice Principal of Bold School, Mr. Frank Heinz Supervisor of Building and Grounds. Approval minutes. At this time, I need approval for the regular meeting minutes on October 15th.
Make that motion.
I'll say.
We'll go with Dennis and Chad. We'll go with the right side today. Any questions on the minutes? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Baldi.
Yes.
Motion.
We have a new club this year, and Mr. Peely was going to introduce some people of the Interact Club.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to introduce Ms. Hearn, who is our advisor to our new Interact Club. Interact Club is a joint venture between the local Rotary and Mary Bold School. We also work with Triton to do some joint activities in the community. Ms. Demattis is kind of a solid advisor who never takes credit for anything, so she's going to appear in a smile. But Ms. Hearn is going to introduce some representatives, tell you a little bit about Interact, and some of the great things that David does. So, welcome.
Okay, so this is our first year as the Interact Club. Rotary approached Ms. Demattis and Mr. Peely about starting a club because there's one at Triton already, and they kind of wanted to segue into that. So, that's how I got the job. It's a very inclusive club. It's for seventh and eighth graders. We have special ed students, we have honors roll students, we have students that have never been in the club before in their life, and it's been an awesome opportunity for kids to meet each other, to partake in service opportunities, to collaborate. So, we're really excited about it. The next couple of my students are going to introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Madeline. This is Katie. I'm the president of the Interact Club.
Hello, my name is Arneal. I'm a student. I'm one of the members.
Hello, my name is Daniel Suba. I am another member of this Interact Club.
Okay, so to start off, we're going to just show a brief video on what Interact is. It's not specific to our school district per se, but just to kind of give you an insight. That's just kind of an interest of what we're doing. Now, Madeline is going to talk about what the Interact Club does in place.
The Interact Club brings together young people, teenagers, youngsters, to develop leadership skills while discovering the power of service above self, finding out how serious leadership can be seriously gone. Today, there are 20,372 Interact Clubs, 468,518 members, 159 in 159 counties.
And the benefits to our students and our community are connecting leaders with the community. So, Ms. Demattis is our liaison between the Rotary and our Interact Club. So, we're kind of co-working together. We also have been in contact with Triton's Interact Club, and we're kind of in the works of getting a joint meeting together just to kind of see what their service projects are for the future. We're making a difference within our own school and within our own community just based off the service projects that we've done so far. It's not only involved to the school, but it's also a broader... We've talked about Polio. We're preparing for Thanksgiving and Christmas. We're becoming leaders within our community, and they're having fun. A lot of our meetings have been involved with intermingling, just like breaking up into groups. Like, we made posters for our Polio fundraiser, and it was different kids that don't know each other working together, which is really cool to see. What is involved? We have to have, by like national Rotary rules, two service projects here. We have plenty more lined up than that. We have two meetings a month, and then there's normally a third meeting with our officers, which we have a president, two vice presidents, secretary, and treasurer. Service opportunities within our Bold's Interact Club thus far and that we're planning.
So, we did a Polio Awareness fundraiser in October where we made posters, and a few members of the Interact Club sold candies at lunch to raise money for the club. We did a Veterans Day breakfast, which a lot of our Interact Club members went to and gave little speeches and wrote cards to the veterans that attended, and a lot of the students here, they knew people that attended the breakfast. We plan to assemble Thanksgiving baskets, which is coming up soon, and we're having a Christmas candy drive and a Project Christmas Child, which is like an Interact Club member is getting boxes from her church, and we're going to fill them up with little toys and things for kids that don't get Christmas presents. And we're doing butterfly bushes in spring.
And that's kind of, we're co-teaming with Rotary, and we're going to be, the Rotary is going to be giving us the bushes, and we're going to help plant and sell them. Our officers, Madeline Priscilla-Caddius is our president. Our vice presidents are Haley Syracuse and Amanda Brown. Our secretary is Jimmy Kaminsky. Our treasurer is Phoebe Neway, and me and Ms. Demattis are the moderators. So, we've kind of slowly been introducing the students into running meetings. The first couple of meetings, me and Ms. Demattis ran, but Madeline did a wonderful job running the meeting. She ran her first full meeting on last Thursday, which was really cool. And now, we're going to have some of our students talk about what we've been up to and how they feel about the matters. That's for that. Don't you worry.
Hi, my name is Daniel Suba, and I am a proud member of Mary Bold School's first National Interact Club sponsored by Rotary. The main goal for our club is doing community service for charity. I enjoy being in this club because I get to make new friends and see other friends. One of our most recent activities was held in our school's cafeteria on Monday, November 11th. We held a breakfast to honor the veterans on Veterans Day. My grandfather was thrilled to be invited. Our upcoming activity on Tuesday is to fill Thanksgiving baskets for family in need.
My name is Arneal, and something I've been liking about Interact Club is the fact that we get to help others that are in need, and it like helps me like see what else is around the world happening. And one of my favorite activities has been Polio Day, where we were able to sell some lollipops to help cure the sickness in honor of those who have passed through it or going through it. And I really love that team and look forward to come, and I like the fact that we get to spend time with our friends in the club or meet other people.
Hello. And what I've learned about Interact is working with people that I've never gotten a chance to talk to before and taking a part in some awesome activities that like really opened myself and other young people's eyes to the other stuff that's going on, going all around the world outside of our town.
Any other questions?
How did you become interested in this? What was the driving force for you to become interested in a service club?
I knew a couple of people that took part in Rotary and Interact, so I found it really interesting how they got together and helped the community. That's how I got involved.
What it's all about. Congratulations to all of you and to your club. I believe in service, especially service for our community. As a councilwoman, I look for leaders to come forth, and I hope that in the spring, when we have youth mayor and council, you'll want to take part in that event because it is all about leadership and service, of course. I'm really encouraged. Thank you, Ozzy.
Thank you.
Good presentation.
I have a question. Did you put together the Thanksgiving basket chat, or is that next Tuesday?
That's on Tuesday.
Okay.
The kids are mediuming it during first and second period. Yeah, they're very excited about it.
I was able to attend your Veterans Breakfast, and it was wonderful. The smiles on the veterans' faces, that people were acknowledging the sacrifices they made in their families' meeting while they were serving.
And they all wrote their own letters. Like, I just kind of gave them guidelines, but they all took it into their own hands, which was really cool.
How many members do you have?
Twenty-seven.
Wow.
Wow. Really touching. It's a huge room.
Wow.
And if I can use a piece of advice, make sure that you continue in high school to be part of this program because they really do a lot of fun and meaningful activities, and sometimes colleges care more about that stuff than they do, you know, your GPA.
I know. Congratulations. It's great on resumes, but no one's thinking like that yet.
A hundred percent. They'll understand in a few years.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Ivey Martin, excuse him. I know some of them have activities that they need to get to, but okay? Guys, a good... Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much for coming.
I'd like to be excited. I would like to take...
At this time, we're open for public comments on agenda items only. Does anyone have any public comments on agenda items at this time? If not, both agree with all of this superintendent's report.
District alone, we have 55 students, 12 out of 33 places. I explained to the email that we're in this place, so our number is a little higher than the last couple of years. District after district, we've seen, obviously, that Interact is something new. It's a great club. In addition to something that we have our own here, and then our fall sports wrapped up. Cross-country was a new activity this year, exposed a lot of kids. I know yourself was a part of that. Still getting kids involved, and I've done in the past, has all been very positive. Those of you that attended school boards, you saw the steam time presentation, Dennis talking about our committee meeting. Those kids were phenomenal. If you had a chance to see that yet, it's on the video on the website or it's a picture on the website. Those kids represented the school very well. They didn't win, however. They did a great job. It was like basically, you know, Shark Tank, without cameras, and some of the questions they were asking.
Yeah, they're brutal. The judges were not nice. They're brutal.
I thought the girls did a great job, answering those questions, representing well. They did a great job. Yeah. Something we've talked about in the past is the vaping epidemic that's come up. I know I've posted some recent resources on this district website regarding vaping. It's also been sent out to teachers to incorporate some of that stuff into the curriculum for today. It's something to keep in mind. We're still trying to get some organizations to come out and do some presentations. I think the Department of Health is under charge of that, the county, trying to get them out and do that. Whether that they come out, if not, it is me infusing the activities during the school day and sending that information out to parents. So, if you hear of anything you've seen in the various districts, please sign up. Just to discover what happened that is going on right now. The better of that activity, as the kids mentioned, that was a great opportunity, all three buildings, to place veterans in. I thought this...
Spalding.
Spalding. I can think now. We talk about for next year, maybe enhancing that a little bit, maybe having a committee come on up. It's been so long, too. Having a committee come up, maybe force some ideas, some other things we can do, not just for Veterans Day, for the veterans, but maybe throughout the year, getting them into the building, involving them in our school community. They were great. You know, it's tough for something to get out, but we'll include that in more activities we want to have. Ms. Demattis is no longer in building, but she's also on ahead for the holiday committee. If you'd like to contribute to the holiday committee, you're always looking for donations if you want to contribute. Just reach out to one of the building principals, and they'll get you in touch, and we'll get in touch with you. We have been talking, we met facilities earlier. We have been talking with budget for 2021, you know, whether it's the gym floor, whether it's the vestibule, security area, or vaults, whether it is, you know, we're adding preschool classroom for next year, so there will be some bath renovation going on, we have to have a bathroom over there. So, we have some plans for that, with the architects, Frank, Sean, and myself at the end of October to get that going. So, we are already in the budget process. Budget calendar. So, probably just a little bit tighter this year, with all the big projects and the big expenses we have going on, we have the gym floor and the special areas, the vestibule area. So, teachers might have to get extra highlighters or pencils this year, I'm not really sure. We'll make sure they're properly supplied. He says we'll be fine, so that's the most important thing. Anybody have any questions?
It's from the baby, and I saw where it was a bell, and the president's stash was signed off on it. The favorite baby. But that's not what happened. But I don't think it was huge, so that's what attracts the young people.
Yeah, like the high school where I'm at, it's literally like, it's amazing. It's, they think it's so normal, and they say that they, like the way that they are marketed, like it's a healthy alternative to cigarettes.
And some parents are actually purchasing the cartridges for their children, thinking it's a better pulitzer, and so they're buying it.
Yeah.
There's a lot of reasons why you're going to see all these things in the news, whether they're buying, you know, knockoff products that are laced with what, who knows what.
Vitamin A acetate.
Which is in all of them. That's a calming, that's not even an additive. That's in all of them.
Right. So, that's what the deaths were attributed to.
They're killing your lives.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Doctor McCarron?
This is Paul Bessad. The Mr. Ranius and I just finished preparing our major review. What we mean with the County Office of Education, we do that every year in December, just to talk about where we are financially, where we are looking forward, how we're addressing different initiatives brought down by the state, how that affects us, and then identify if any supports are needed from them. October 15th just passed with our SSAs. We're closing that out for our auditors. So, while the audit takes place at the end of the year, there's actually a lot of work that we do throughout the year, and the SSAs identifies how many students we have as of October 15th. The numbers we submit directly affect our budgeting process in April. So, when I start the budget through the Department of Education website, a lot of numbers might already be populated, and that's based on the work that we did in October. So, it's making sure that we have everything accounted for and that we have everything in place, so that way the budgeting process goes smooth. As Mr. I said, we are working on the 2021 budget and trying to make sure all of our projects are lined up. Every school district fights for those July, August construction times, so if we know that we have certain projects coming in, we need to make sure that we're securing the vendors sooner rather than later. For curriculum, we just submitted our pre-K one-year plan. You guys are approving us to submit that plan officially this evening, and then that states what we're doing for the following year. So, right now, we're proposing to increase, so we're not really increasing, so while we're adding additional classroom, we're keeping the same number of classes because we currently have one classroom that's two half-days, and we're going to be taking the two half-days and turning that into two full-day classrooms. The Department of Education at one point said as long as you're increasing to full-day, they would fund your half-day and full-day programs. They then came back two months later and said as of 2021, if you have a half-day program, you are no longer funded, which is why we're then moving to the full-day model across the board. We're also in the preparation for testing for the end of the school year. A lot of work goes behind the scenes with standardized testing, state testing, so while it only takes four days, there's definitely a lot of days that it takes to make sure everything's set up, student modification, special education, classrooms, and that all students are ready to go. And then, just a lot of work has been going on currently with curriculum in regards to preschool, working with the master teacher, working with our preschool intervention and referral team, and making sure that we have all the mandated things that are required by the grant set up and in place for it to be successful. That's where we are with this office and curriculum. Any questions?
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. Principal, nurses, building and grounds, special education reports were attached. Does anyone have any questions on any of them?
Yes.
Okay. Chad?
I'm interested in Ozzy, your report. Can you give a little more information about, when we quickly addressed, you said I am in the process of gathering some information in reference to homework and our expectation for school to home.
So, I recently put out a survey to my teachers by grade level, and I found some scholarly articles that either were for or were against homework, and then I just had them give me some feedback on what they are doing regularly. I mean, I review their lesson plans, and I'm in the classrooms, but sometimes those are like judgment calls each day. So, while I'm all about like the art of teaching, and I don't like every teacher to do exactly the same thing, there should be some uniformity through the district. So, I wanted their feedback first, so I just got their results. I put a Google form out to each grade level, and I just want to take the time to review their feedback and how often they're giving it, what they find the value in it, what the feedback will be from the parents, if we change it, and things like that. I just want to make sure that we're staying true and doing what we need to do so that we're always doing what's best for our students. And I feel like I'm always open to change, and, you know, you hire new staff, we get new ideas, but, you know, there's certain things that are best practices regardless if it's 1990 or, you know, 2020. So, I'm just want to make sure that I'm staying current and have a pulse on what teachers feel is needed and what we want to do moving forward as a district. So, I just actually just spoke with Dr. McCarron about that today, and I just told him, "Lay off for a minute, I want to review the data, analyze it, and then once I feel like I have, you know, I've kind of digested all of that, then I'll bring it up at administrative meeting and share my results," but I'm going to see the market, the whole group, so.
The reason why I put my attention is when I was a principal, the superintendent asked me to review our homework policy, and so one of the things that I did is I surveyed every high school district in the county, what's your homework policy? And it varied greatly, from very intense, even all weekends, to, and the one that seemed to work best for us was homework was a natural Monday through Thursdays. Friday into the weekend, we never gave homework, homework was not assigned unless it was in preparation for midterms or finals because of kids being so active on the weekends, these sports and other things, that kind of like back off a little bit, give them a little time to, you know, enjoy their little lives, so.
Yeah, I will share that data with the board we live for. I literally just printed it out to look over thirty days again, so.
Any other questions? All right. Any other reports? I spoke to Naomi earlier. She's actually covering for a sick colleague at work, so she was unable to be here, but she said that she will have a report for us next, next month. Any other reports?
Yes. Okay. From the Board of Directors of the KFED Services Commission, the only thing really of any significance that I want to raise here is they finally got approval from the state who are good with this, to go with their first RFP on putting together health agencies to work with the mental health aspect. So, it's finally moving, but as slow as things go, you know that, working with threatened, this probably won't get kicked off until the 2021 school year. But, so there's some progress being made there. That was the only thing that came up there. At the zoning board meeting, they brought up the topic of liquidity hotel property last February. I think that the company wanting to invest in a hotel is from Minnesota or Wisconsin, and their plan was to convert that hotel into senior living, and senior assistant living. Nothing has happened if you've ever divested property since February, and it has fallen through. But they, the zoning board with mayor and council are looking at ways that they can get that property utilized by somebody, so it becomes useful, and, you know, get the tax dollars because that hotel property currently owes our municipality over $170,000 in back taxes. So, that particular project is not going anywhere as of now. Other than that, just one variance on a garage construction, I think that's it there. But something interesting came up at the zoning board meeting. The president, Candy Kleiman?
Michael.
Yes. Announced to the public about a grant that's called Community Heart and Soul. And Mr. Leek, who sits on the zoning board, was not at the zoning board meeting because he was attending a workshop meeting for this grant. There are five grants that are going to be offered in New Jersey to a community, each one to $100,000. And it started out with over eighty applications, they're down to the mid-thirties, we're still in it. And basically, what it is, is to get all aspects of your community talking and helping each other and having activities for everyone that lives in the community. And I just mentioned that, you know, if they went, you know, if they were able to get this grant, that we should brainstorm with them and see what we as a school district could offer. So, they, first, they can't buy any organization or school district equipment, but they can supply materials, food, other support with this grant money. I think, yeah, we'd have to brainstorm, but the first thing that popped in my head was, you know, with all the computers that we have here, maybe for people in the community that are a computer literate, we could offer an evening of computer basic training, and then the grant would supply meals, materials for the computers, like for your printers and all that kind of stuff, and maybe some other activities and ideas we could come up with. But I thought it was a great opportunity for our town to hopefully get one of these $100,000 grants. And there's nothing better than making your community even tighter and knowing each other better and supporting people when they need help. I think any of us as human beings, we'd rather give than get, and when you give, it's a good feeling. So, I think this is a great, and I'm sure you're involved in it.
I am. I...
I am. Actually, this Thursday at six o'clock?
Six thirty.
Six thirty at the senior center is another meeting that the whole public's invited to, and it's a free pizza dinner.
I'm actually, I'm going to attend with my father and my brother.
I'll put you down.
I think Rochelle put me down, but.
She did not tell me, but I'll make sure that you're on it.
Thank you.
You and your father.
And my brother.
Are there RSVPs to you, right Eleanor?
Yes.
So any RSVP goes to Eleanor, but everybody from the town is invited, anybody and everybody, anybody involved in the school is invited.
So I'll update you, I said that I would go to the first meeting before I guess.
And this grant, it actually falls under our number one, our first goal as Board of Ed, and that is to assist administrative staff with service projects. So this is our thinking and our philosophy.
It was definitely at the first meeting, and it was very informative and very, we all worked together, teams, different groups of people in the different aspects of the town, like the seniors, the scouts, the, there's different programs there. But anyhow, they, we all worked together, they was there.
Yeah, I was there, and it was, it was unique because you had various groups from the town. And we all, all the groups have the same goals, and, but we, we were finally in the same room, you know? So you had Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, seniors, police, everybody, you know, every, every nonprofit organization in the town was there. And, you know, most of our goals are to, you know, improve this neighborhood, you know, everybody's kind, wants to have a better town. And that's what we were working for that night. I'm unfortunately committed to something else Thursday night, but I do have some people going, you know, Mrs. Kelly. And, but if you can make it, it was worthwhile, and it was just nice, you know, working with a different group of people.
Another thought that I had with youth in our community, with Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, they have to earn merit badges. Maybe there are programs we can run at night at the school on a, or on a Saturday for help, to help them earn certain merit badges. So that's another way we can bring the community together and see how the kids that go to our school see us in a different light, where we're helping them in another way.
There's an attendee at this meeting who spends most of her retirement on that same, Mrs. Kelly. Don't act like you think I'm talking about something. But Mrs. Kelly is spending most of her retirement thus far working toward that grant, just saying, so.
Well, thank you, so thank, we'll spread the word, and if anyone can make it, we'll let you know. You can put me down, I'll be there. I cleared my schedule.
The last thing I had was, I've given each a copy from the convention of the workshops. And what's the points I've been, I don't know. If a school district has required summer readings, and that gets incorporated into the child's grade the next year, that has to be stated in your board policy, or you can't do it. You can give them a reading, but it's involuntary, and it can't have any reflection on the grades. So you have to make sure that is built into your policy, and that's covered in one of these workshops, by attending.
We have, it's not a grade, correct? It's not a grade, it's an option.
Okay.
Anyone else, anything? I promised one of my friends that I would announce to everyone that the winter production at Trenton is a Christmas carol, and it's Friday, December sixth, Saturday, December seventh, and then they're doing a matinee on Sunday, the eighth. So that's what Mr. Anucci sent out, and they're doing like a breakfast with CNN, different things. So again, our youth in this town, they're extremely talented, and so if you aren't doing anything that weekend, you should check it out. There's going to be stuff on our website about it as well, so. I promised my friend I'd give her a plug. She's a director.
How do we go about purchasing tickets?
They can be purchased at the door, and they're ten dollars. Any, anything else? No. All right, so then we'll go on to new business, under property and transportation. We need a motion for number one, facility use of number ones of four.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Jazz.
Second.
Seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhan.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Benzerella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes. Under personnel, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through ten. However, number seven needs to be modified for a start date of December ninth, not January thirteenth, so seven will be
December ninth through June thirtieth.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Dan. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhan.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Benzerella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes. Under finance, we need a motion to approve items numbers one through ten.
I'll make that motion, if we want to ten.
Motion made by Angel, seconded by Dennis. Any questions? Roll call. Oh, sorry, timeout.
What C M P stand for? Remind me, number four.
C M P.
Number of maintenance plan. So what we have to do, we have to update from our prior budget, any money that was spent out of specific lines, so that way they know what updates we've done or what we're looking for.
What's M one?
M one is the facilities documentation, so it's all maintenance of facilities.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Ms. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhan.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Benzerella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
I shouldn't have said duh.
Well, with all the applicants. The lead, the key would be this big, you said you just want to make a K for all the applicants. But it's like, we have a thousand. We have a thousand just in special ed, so we would have two thousand and something like this. Right. Under curriculum, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through three.
I'll make a motion to approve items one, two, three.
Motion made by Patty.
Sorry.
Seconded by Barbie, got it first. Any questions? Roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhan.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Benzerella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes. Policy and public relations items one and two need a motion. Motion made by Maria. Seconded by Dan. Roll call.
Ms. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhan.
Yes.
Mr. Lego. Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Benzerella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
And Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Real quick, also want to thank the senior citizens club, they donated a hundred dollars to each school, I believe on.
Monday.
Monday.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday.
Today's season.
So I'll run it again.
It's been a long time.
Please thank the women's club as well. At this time, we're open for public comment on any, any public comment at this time?
Can we, just for the record and publicly, it's, it's come up in meetings I was in and in, just within community members, in terms of our outstanding lunch debt and that no child here is turned away for lunch. I've had people.
So I'm going to stop you there.
Please.
Just so you know, if there was an issue, so, so we can't help, we can't stop what people publicly put out there. That is not a big balance for a school district.
Listen, I.
Hold on, let me finish, please. However, our policy, no child, no child is given a cracker or a peanut butter and jelly. They get to order a regular lunch.
I know this.
I, I know, but if anyone has asked, the school would say the same thing. So we can't stop people from posting on social media pages about that, but just so you know, we may have had other policies in the past, but with the cherry oil debacle, we now, they are allowed to get whatever they normally get. And that balance for a school district with almost nine hundred kids is nothing. And like Dr. McCarron pointed out, sometimes people say, oh, I forgot, I'm going to pay it, and I, I can't pay it every month, so I'm going to pay a hundred in September, then I'm going to pay a hundred and, two hundred in January, so that balance doesn't reflect all of that. So just so you know, as the board president, Andrew's been speaking to our administrative team, I reached out to the person who started all to clarify, to make sure that the correct terminology and policy is put out. But none of our students are ever hungry and they're not eating crackers.
It was understood by some in the community who don't have children in school, that.
Well, listen, there is, the people that, that were talking on that social media thing about taxes and the tax dollars and all that, that's just, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, no, I, I, all I know is I was approached within the community, making sure that no one was going without a lunch. I assured them no one was, but I think that this, that kindness, great efforts, aside from the school district, great. However, none of that was instigated by any child being turned away from.
No, it was not instigated, it was a mother who, who struggled herself, who thought that it would be a good way to get back to her community. And when I told, she had no idea it would turn into like a fiasco where people talking badly about the school district in any way, shape, or form, because that's not how she feels about our school, our school district. So she was actually taken aback by how something, a kind gesture around the holiday season could be turned into something, you know? So, so I did actually reach out to her, and she called me immediately, and we spoke about it. And, but I, because I wanted hers, since her name was attached to it, to, to be given the correct information. And I honestly haven't heard anything about it since, and I'm happy for you just as much as you, so.
Yeah, it was just fire.
Yeah.
No, we don't.
But thanks for bringing that up, because honestly, I forgot about it.
Yeah, no, it was there.
Yeah. Anything else? Any other comments? Yes.
I was at all the computers yesterday, and New Jersey school boards sent out a white paper that was written by Dr. Bill Daggett and Dr. Stephanie Jones. Daggett's the chairman of the International Center for Leadership in Education, and Dr. Jones is the director for ecological approaches to social and emotional learning, and also professor of education at Harvard Graduate School. It's a great study, a good report. I was really happy to see that the professional development recently was about bias, and that was another workshop they had down in the city, explicit and implicit bias, we all have. And the other key, though, to affect the schools and children learning, is dealing with their social and emotional learning as well. It's a really good report. I really stressed that the administrative team take over that report. Might give you some other ideas. They also offer professional training at your school in reference to this.
Thank you, I'll have to check it out. All right, if there's nothing else, our next meeting is December seventeenth, here at Volt's again, regular time. I need a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn means made by Patty. I need a second. Seconded by Dan, all in favor? Aye, aye, thank you.